City Council.
Mike Warrington, City Council.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Shelby Carcelary, City Council.
Dr. Joseph Ford, City Council Member.
Homer, City Council Member.
Ben Graver, Captain of Police Department.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lanza, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
J T Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Emily Wright, Interim City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
Mr. Tuggle, they have you as leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'd rather you do the invocation. So Brad Tuggle will lead us into invocation.
You can do the pledge too if you want.
Let's pray. Lord, we are so thankful for today. Thankful that you've given us another day to serve this community and to serve you. Thankful for the cooler weather and for the change of seasons that reminds us of your great design. We pray a blessing on this community. We thank you for our first responders. Ask that you protect them each day and that you grant blessings to their families who sacrifice so much. Thank you for all those who labor here and who work here and who give so much of themselves. Pray that you would bless them and bless the proceedings tonight, that the decisions made would be those of wisdom and the collective good of our community. We thank you for blessing us. We look to you for all good things in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public forum. If you'd like to say something, state your name, your address, and keep it short. Nobody? Mr. Ackley? No? All right. Public forum is closed. Jenny, do you have anything on the agenda that we need to talk about?
I just want to point out that nothing's changed since the updated version you got this afternoon, but we did add this afternoon item eight point seven to your consent agenda, P E C supplemental agreement related to the fire station park and some surveying required therein. If you're wondering what else changed on some of the items, we actually added the documents, the attachments to items ten, the Butler Community College items, as well as a signed agreement from A S M on item nine point one. But the items themselves did not change, just the attachments.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, seven one, citizens request vending and alcohol requests, Sunlight Children's Services. And Daniel's going to talk to us about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You might recall at the previous meeting, Sunlight Children's Services was here with Shelby Boso to ask for permissions to do the fundraising event at the community center. That event's gained a lot of traction in the past few weeks with some sponsors and so forth. They would like to ask permissions to do alcohol vending and sales. They have secured a third-party vent licensed vendor for our requirements. So it's pretty straightforward, but I can answer any questions if you still have them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the sale and consumption of alcohol at the Andover Community Center on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three for the Sunlight Children's Services Fright Night fundraiser.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Dan, are we concerned about like safety or security? You know, anytime we mix a fundraiser with alcohol, it can get rowdy, so.
Sure. We've been visiting about that with staff. The attendance at the proposed fundraiser party is not to expect to exceed any of our action thresholds at five hundred persons like we do for special events.
Five hundred people at the A C C, that's quite a bit.
They're not expecting that many. That's usually the the action point.
How many people are we expecting here?
One hundred fifty to two hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. I drew a blank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, seven two, GAD Parade closure, road closure. Daniel?
I apologize for having to bring this back to you. If you feel like we just talked about this, we did. Two weeks ago, I had put the wrong date down. I put October first, so you approved a parade on Sunday that we don't intend to have. The parade is in fact on Saturday, which is September thirtieth, so same closure or accept the date, same locations, et cetera. So we'd like to re submit this for your approval with the correct date.
Do do we need to cancel the other one or something formally? Mr. Mayor.
No, sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Just sure.
I move to approve the closure of Andover Road from Aaron Drive to Central Avenue and Central Avenue from Andover Road to Jaguar Drive on Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, from nine thirty a m. to eleven a m. for the Greater Andover Days Parade.
Second.
Any further questions?
I do have one, and this may be Jaguar Drive is actually off Shea.
Shea is off Central.
Right. And then.
Yeah, Shea Shea runs east, west, and goes from Central to Douglas.
Correct, but Jaguar Drive is right there.
Jaguar Drive is more or less a private road or a private drive.
Shea though.
That the school property owns, yes.
We does it go from Central all the way around to Shea then? Because if so, then it's still.
There is an eastern terminus of it at Central, right?
Is it? Okay, because usually they always turn down Shea Street and go up that way, so.
Yeah, we were going to make that closure all the way to Jaguar, which would be near the track.
Okay, so so unlike other years, it's going farther down.
That will let us get multiple entries into that area.
Perfect. I didn't realize Jaguar went all the way that way.
So so the folks, the floats and such, will be able to go down Shea and or Jaguar Drive?
Any of those parking lots into the school complex to disband.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, eight, eight one through eight seven, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve consent agenda items eight point one through eight point seven as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Capitol Federal Amphitheater Management, Capitol Theater Management Agreement, and that would be nine one, and Jennifer is going to talk to us about it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I am thrilled to present to you tonight an agreement with A S M Global Venue Management, Arena Management, to take over management of the Capitol Federal Amphitheater. You know, we've been talking about this for quite some time, but for our public that's watching, I want to assure you, this is not the first time this conversation has been brought up. It's actually started at the very beginning of the year when we sent out a request for qualifications. We received those back in March. The Amphitheater Committee, which is set by ordinance by the city council, that committee's membership met, reviewed the applications, made a selection, worked through the agreement that's before you tonight, and then that agreement was presented to the governing body at last month's workshop, which was on August twenty eighth. Since that time, we have worked through legal on both sides and have an executed agreement from A S M before you tonight. Some of the highlights are that the agreement term is for five years, beginning January one of twenty twenty-four and running through twenty twenty-eight. However, the transition period actually starts next week, so they are ready to hit the ground running with approval tonight. They already are actually talking to individuals who may be interested in coming to Capitol Federal Amphitheater, so we're very excited to already see some interest and excitement about this venue. The rationale for the public who may or may not know, there's been mixed feelings on if city staff could run an entertainment venue. And in a technical sense, we can. We've had concerts out here. We've had events out here. From a financial sustainability point of view, we don't appear to be that good at it. And some of that is because it's not what we do. We are not experts in the entertainment industry. We do not have fifty thousand employees. We do not have three hundred and fifty venues, and we don't have twelve outdoor amphitheaters to pull from. But we found a partner who does, and that's who is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. The only year in the five years that the cities operated the amphitheater that we did not operate in the red was twenty twenty, when we did not do concerts. Not exactly the ringing track record that we would hope for. What we believe we're presenting to you tonight will actually very likely save money on an annual basis, but more than that, it will deliver a better product consistently to your public, both the Andover residence as well as the greater Wichita metro area, and those who may choose to visit the amphitheater and make Andover a destination for a weekend or a short stay, which was precisely the impetus for the amphitheater in the beginning. From a and I'm going through this quickly because we did go through this at our workshop last month. It is available online for the public that may want to go through this slide by slide, but in order to not present the exact same information to you as last month, I will kind of hit the highlights. Compensation that A S M will receive will be a minimum of an annual management fee of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then there is incentives available based on ticket sales, food and beverage sales, and then incentives based on when we see improvements in operating income. They will receive additional funds based on that. Additionally, besides the seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the city's portion, if we operate in the red, then any additional shortfall, the city will also make up. This budget will be agreed upon on both sides the year prior. And so in this example, which is based on educated estimates, it's not just an example, but it is not the final decision for twenty twenty-four. We still need to work through that, assuming agreement of the approval of the agreement tonight. But in this example, based on historical data, the total would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the city to that'd be our contribution, and that does include the seventy-five thousand dollar management fee. To give you an idea, on a five-year rolling average, we have lost over fifty thousand dollars on average per year, and that includes an over eighty thousand dollar subsidy from your convention and visitors bureau. So looking at that, anything where we're spending less than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year would be a better than what we are spending for those programming programs today. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this takes a tremendous amount of work to get to the point where we are tonight. And I get to deliver the good news and give you the presentation and look like I did a lot of the work all by myself. That would not be accurate. Your former Assistant City Administrator had hoped very much to have had this on the September twelfth agenda, his last one, so that he could see it across the finish line, but was that was unable to happen because we needed to get a couple more details just right. So we do want to give kudos where kudos is due. A J Beleski, the General Manager for Intrust Bank Arena, and he will be working on our local team as they get set up, is here tonight. I think he'd like to say hello, introduce himself to the public. He's got kids in the Andover School District and has been out to Capitol Federal Amphitheater for several events, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. I really appreciate the opportunity. Jennifer, thank you for the introduction. And as as was stated, we have been working together with the city going back through most of the summer and into the spring. It's been a great partnership thus far, and we're really looking forward to this opportunity. You're probably familiar with our company. So again, A J Beleski, I'm the General Manager for Intrust Bank Arena. Our company, A S M Global, manages public facilities, over three hundred public facilities across the world, but a really good mix of arenas, stadiums, theaters, convention centers, museums, there's a few others in there, but a good variety of facilities, and we're looking forward to the opportunity. As was mentioned, our kids are in the school district. My wife teaches in the school district as well, and we've moved to Wichita in two thousand and ten and to work at the arena. So have very familiar with the city of Andover and the amphitheater, have been out here for several events, pretty much all of them this summer. Just kind of taking pictures and notes on on how things currently work, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to bring more events. I we understand when we're running, you know, most times when we manage facilities, pretty much every time we're managing a public facility, somebody else's venue, the public's venue, your venue, and we don't take that for granted at all. We take a lot of pride in that. We know that when we're out there having an event, hosting an event, it's a symbol of of the city of Andover and of you, and so we want you to be proud of that, and we're looking forward to the opportunity. We focus a lot on the guest experience and the guests coming in the the venue and the experience that they have. And so that's what you will hear a lot about as we move forward. As part of the plan, in the presentation, we do expect to have two full-time staff on the ground, one director, and then also a marketing slash box office person that would be focused on this venue every single hour of the day. They're focused on this venue. And then in addition to that, this is a model that we also use with our venues here in the Wichita market. We will have some a handful of staff at Intrust Bank Arena that will provide shared services and support to this venue. And then obviously, on a show night, when you host anywhere from four to five to six, seven thousand people, we need a little, we need a few more folks too. So we will again be relying on some of our existing staff at some of our venues currently, along with some of our part-time staff as well. And that's how we plan to to operate the venue. Strategy going in is to introduce this venue to promoters and to, you know, we have a good network in this region being in the market since two thousand and ten at the arena, also the Orpheum Theater since two thousand and thirteen, and then most recently Century Two started in two thousand and twenty-one. So we have a, we feel like we have a very good network of regional promoters and some national promoters that we can introduce to the theater and to the amphitheater and have them bring in, come in and partner with us on events. We also recognize it's a community asset, right? And so part of that is finding the balance. We can't just have a concert every single night from a national promoter. It's also about hosting some of the local events, the Gridiron Events, the Andover Day is coming up this weekend. So those will always be part of the mix. We will have mutual conversations with the city as to what is important to the city and and as we move forward, as we look at rental rates and those kinds of things, to make sure that we we find that balance and run a venue that you're you're certainly proud of. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I ask, A J, thank you for that. That was really good information. I would, I would, you know, this is a small city, fifteen thousand-ish. Is this the smallest city that you operate a venue in?
Ah, that's a really good question. I don't know if I I probably would have to guess if I if I said that. I would say it's probably one of the smaller ones. But we run a wide variety of capacities of venues, everything from six hundred-seat theaters up to hundred thousand-seat stadiums and including six NFL stadiums. So wide variety. The the great thing about our company, I know it sounds fifty thousand employees, three hundred billions, but the thing that's good for us is as operators is we have a network. We're not operating on an island. There is similar venues, right? We have one that I think is very similar to this one. It's in Lincoln, Nebraska. It's called Pinewood Bowl Amphitheater. And I was actually able to go up there in May and tour the venue, and so we'll get on calls with them every month with like venues, arenas, theaters, amphitheaters, and talk about what's going on. Who are you working with? What shows have you booked? Who did you talk to to book it? And how was your experience? And all of those lead to future events, and we bring them back to Capitol Federal Amphitheater.
That's very good.
Long answer to your.
No, that was good. And I do appreciate that, you know, allowing the most beautiful venue of all being the Andover one. We hope you promote it that way. And I was kind of getting to also in a small venue like this that's really city-focused is no requirement, but it would be nice if the mayor or council president or someone from the city could at most of the events, if not all of them, actually get up and kind of speak and welcome them to the city. And I think that's a big part of what we've always done. It would be nice to continue that.
We definitely had a similar conversation at the workshop a couple of weeks ago and and realized how important that is and definitely willing to to make sure that those kinds of things continue to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor's been known to walk the lines and shake hands. Is that the other question, or is that something I can still do?
Absolutely. You're the boss. So for sure.
Probably not dance, you know, no dancing there.
We would welcome that, for sure.
Any other questions?
Sure. Just real quick, I see that it's starting in January twenty twenty-four, Jenny, so there's no other shows already booked or that this would be interrupting that if that have already been planned or A J, are we going to honor those dates if there was anything to come up? I mean, I don't think there is, but.
The city staff has not planned any twenty twenty-four concerts. No.
And I do just want to say, you know, myself, you know, I've been impressed with the city staff, what they've planned thus far. You know, coordinating and especially without a theater coordinator, a Capitol Federal Amphitheater Coordinator. So kudos goes out to the staff that has done it up to this point, but I definitely think this is a step in the right direction. I had the opportunity to take part in an A S M show, Cats, I believe, was at Century Two. And I I thought it was well-presented. I thought the food vendor that, you know, you have there is the same one that will be done here, and I thought that was nice and it went well. So and I don't, it was packed the night I went, but you couldn't tell that from, you know, a line standpoint or anything like that, you know, out of the norm, you know. But it was done done very well, and I was impressed. I didn't let you know ahead of time that I was testing that out, so, you know, you passed my test, but.
Did you go in there like this?
I did. I said, what do we got here? So it was an awesome show, A J, and and welcome to Andover, if this should pass tonight.
I suppose some of us, because it's the end of the season, but I've actually had a handful of people reach out to me in the last two weeks saying, hey, are we going to have concerts next year and what's going on? And I told them to stay tuned. So it is it is something that the locals want to have, and and it draws people in from Kansas City, Oklahoma City. We've had, so I have confidence that you guys can do a lot better than than we did.
Taylor Garth Aerosmith, just a name.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for J T.
Yes, sir.
J T, on the contract thirteen point one, use of facilities, direction of the city, it states that, you know, the the city can have training classes and other uses without payment of any rental or use fee, parentheses, or at a reduced fee. I guess it's for both. What exactly or at a reduced fee are we talking about if we want to use it for training classes?
Usually what that, and this is not uncommon, so a lot of times when we manage a facility on somebody's behalf, city, county, whatever it might be, there's usually a clause in the agreement about this, and what it pertains to is usually those expenses or reduced expenses would be our hard costs and and whatever the event is. If there's, if we need to bring in security, which we probably wouldn't for a training, but if we had a setup and we had to set up a hundred tables and chairs and we had to bring in some staff to do that, that's what would be passed on. Or if you chose to order some catering through us, you know, the hard cost of that event is what that relates to.
Okay, so as a city, are we required to use your catering? I didn't see any of that in here, so.
I think those are certainly conversations that we can have down the road as we get into things, but we're certainly open to.
And then J T, this is why I love you, but you're very detailed because you are a lawyer. Is this contract fair? And I mean, is there anything in here that will bite us in the butt if we're not careful?
I think that answer to that question is no, but only because your predecessors, with good advice, had the foresight to finance the Capitol Federal Amphitheater entirely with taxable bonds.
Okay.
I think this contract would present all kinds of issues if it were not financed that way, but it was financed using a mechanism such that you can basically use it for anything, including you can have a management contract, which would be a huge problem, or it financed like the rest of your facilities. So 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 no, I I don't think so. I think that there will be some give and take. I think that the city frankly is used to acting like the owner and the manager. And I I mean, I'm, I'd be remiss if I didn't think there will be bumps along the way. But this will be a good five years to find out whether you like it better this way.
And then, A J, we currently have sponsorships. I didn't see much in here about like the sponsorships and I mean, is that something we're going to work through?
Are you talking about the current sponsorships you have?
The naming naming rights is referenced in here, and that does remain in place. But if if they wish to seek additional sponsorships, then they may do that. And the same agreement that we have with Capitol Federal that says you can't have other banks or financial institutions, that all applies and it indicates in the agreement that they do need to oblige by that.
And then we didn't mention to be able to have city use tickets. Is that still a thing?
Again, it's a conversation we can have as we as we move forward, for sure.
Okay.
I think what's difficult about those things is, and A J can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's probably very dependent on a show-by-show, a producer-by-producer type event, so it's probably hard to give a carte blanche. Yes, we'll always have ten free tickets or something like that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question to Jenny. So we have the Capitol Federal Amphitheater Facebook page. Will the city still retain that, or will that be over to the?
I'll let A J talk more, but part of their expertise is absolutely in the marketing, and one of their requirements is that they maintain the website. So I'll let you talk about that.
Yes. So one of the first things, I mentioned the two employees that we plan to have. One of those will be a marketing slash box office employee. And one of the first things that we will like to do is establish a standalone website. That's one of the first things we do just about in every venue we go into and and start building our database. Again, somebody who's focused, and it's no slight to anybody here, but when you have somebody who that's all they're worried, all they're focused on is one that venue every single day when they come to work, it's just they're able to move things forward a little bit more. And so in that regard, on the website, and then also creating our own social media sites, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, those sites as well. There's a lot of ways to reach people nowadays, and so it's important to us to keep all of those updated and to actually to have all of those sites active so we can reach people in many ways and tell them about the shows.
Right, yeah. The so will you guys have a press release to let everyone know that that y'all will be taking over this, or is that something the city will be doing?
Generally, I would, we haven't really talked about it yet, but I would say usually we work mutually together on what that would look like and who wants to send it out. But for sure, we would, we would love to participate in that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. That puts puts it out there that you guys are taking over and and lets everyone know that what what to expect. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
What, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sure. Kind of a follow-on to the to the website. I don't know if it's like a standard you use, but since it's a standalone, it would be nice if it could just still be a subdomain dot, and so like CapitolFederal or Amphitheater dot AndoverKS dot com, because then it would still look like it's part of ours. But it can, if you have a subdomain, you can point it to any server and you could fully run it somewhere else. But at least then it would look like it's part of ours.
What would probably be the better approach would be they're going to do their website how they're going to do it, and we could redirect what we have to that site and just take down the content that we have. So if there are people that are used to getting to it through an Andover K S domain, they could continue to do that. But if if you're just looking for Capitol Federal Amphitheater from Oklahoma and you have no reason to think to attach Andover K S to that web domain, you know, you would still get to theirs.
Okay, I guess just being slightly in the, you know, the web backend that I that I work on, I feel like there is an opportunity to still have exactly what you said, which is like redirect from where it's currently sitting on our website. But also there's an opportunity to just like instead of W W W, you can literally put CapitolFederal dot AndoverKS dot com, and it would still point to their website, not ours. I know, I just kind of like that, keeping it part of it if that's possible. But if the staff doesn't want to do that, rather create a whole new domain like CapitolFederalAmphitheaterKansas or Andover dot com, I guess that's fine too. But this is an option. It's pretty simple to make it stay part of our domain.
When we get to that part, we would definitely work hand in hand with the city to make sure that whatever address we use, that it's something that the city is agreeable to.
And also. And also to follow up on that as well. We, we've had vendors come in before and, and they proclaim that we're Wichita. And we want to make sure that everyone understands that we're in Andover. So, so when broadcasting out to, you know, whatever concert is going to be here, it'd be nice to everyone to understand that it's actually Andover.
Very noted and we'll be sure to do that.
That last year.
I know several times. Yeah.
Didn't one of our concerts, they even said Wichita when they, yeah, that was.
Melissa.
So, all right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I moved to approve the agreement with ASM Global Arena Management LLC, LA, California, for management of the Capitol Federal Amphitheater as presented.
Second. Go ahead, Tim.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, sir. I look forward to the partnership.
All right. We very, we very much look forward to it too. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks AJ.
All right. Butler County. Butler Community College Edition ten one Butler Community College thirteenth street expansion revised developers agreement petition and amending resolution of advisability. And we, guess we're going to talk about it or?
It'll be, it's the Jennifer show tonight.
Okay.
The Butler Community College project, this is back to a expansion that the college did. They came to the city in twenty nineteen requesting to expand their thirteenth street location and they have since done that. Part of the requirements of the plat when they made that expansion was to finish Yorktown and commerce adjacent to their property. Way back in twenty nineteen, we had petitions, we agreed that we would do a sixty forty split. And then COVID and then tornado and then, and then we are now at the point where we're ready to move forward with the project. Unfortunately, the engineering estimate, like many of the projects we've been working on over the last few years has crawled and it's crawled up to about thirty six percent higher than it had in twenty nineteen when we signed agreements. So this is not a new project. This is one that has already been agreed to on both sides. The revised petitions were taken to the Butler County trustees. Actually, I'll go back even further. On August twenty eighth, your assistant city administrator and mayor and myself went to the board of trustees workshop, explained the situation to the trustees. Like this board, many of them were not on the board. Actually, I think a hundred percent of that board was not on the board when they approved the project in nineteen. So we were kind of introducing the project and then explaining the increase in costs. They then met on September twelfth and they did vote to approve the petitions with a not to exceed amount, which is included in the documents before you tonight. If I have the number fresh in my head, it's one million, five hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred. I got it right. How about that? And so that will represent sixty percent of the expected cost of the projects. Obviously, if we go out to bid and those come in less, then nobody's going to pay more than they need to, but up to one point five one three million dollars. Be happy to answer any questions you have, but otherwise it's a relatively routine action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What happens Jenny, if it comes up higher than that?
Then you can make a decision if you would like to do the project or not, but they, they were very clear that they did not want to exceed that amount.
So do we fall back to the, I mean, because it's requirement for us, for them to, for the plat that they did, correct?
They will only agree to what is before you tonight, which is not the first time we've had another local government partner do this. Donna reminded me that in some school district projects that we have done, there has been a not to exceed amount. You are all familiar with a not to exceed motion and there are times when we do that. So I believe that maybe a little bit more commonplace in, in some government bodies. And that's why we're seeing that. But they were relatively uncomfortable with a thirty six percent increase and wanted to help protect their funds as well.
Do we feel that's, that's a good number? I mean, I'm assuming.
I feel like it's a lot better than what it was before. It represents a four hundred thousand dollar increase from the partitions we had before this week.
And I got to tell you, and most people don't realize it, but it does benefit both parties significantly. They've already put in four driveways for this road. The school has. So they've invested to have this road run next to their, to their. In fact, I counted them today. And so it will be safer on thirteenth street and safer for the college. And it will take a little flow off of Andover Road. So both parties definitely benefit from it. And both parties are got a little bit of sting from the raised, raised cost of doing business. So, but yes, they're very solid on their stance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Jenny, do we know what the vote, I mean, was it a unanimous vote on September twelfth?
It was not. It was four, two, one. They did have an abstention due to a conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Rick, do you, did you review that number to see if it was in line of current construction costs in that field?
I did not. It would take quite some work to try to, you know, work through that and hopefully, and I'm assuming that the engineer that came up with this new revised petition. Recently, I've, I'm hearing they're reaching out to the contractors more and more because of the flux in pricing nowadays and helping, and they're getting help in building those estimates. So if you, I think, I feel like lately in the last few estimates we've had, we've seen less and less overages with newer estimates. And I think some of that is because they have come to grasp with some of the changing environments and pricing. But no, I have not looked at that.
I'd like to interrupt real quick. Trans Systems, the project engineer reaffirmed the estimate in July.
Okay. All right. That was my next question of which engineer who was it? Was it ours or theirs or is Trans, Trans Systems working for?
I'm sorry. It was PEC. That's the project engineer, but the project engineer reaffirmed it in July.
So PEC is working for the college on this.
They are working for the college on this project. They do happen to also be your city engineer, but they are retained because they are the colleges engineer, and that's why they've been retained for the project.
And we feel confident that from them that this is fair.
They're your city engineer. I, I think so. Yes.
Les. Yes.
That thirty six percent is, is comparable to what we've seen over the past four years.
I agree.
Typically, we see about four, four and a half percent, but through COVID, that doubled. So they're confident in their numbers. I've looked at them and they seem to be in line with other projects that we're doing.
And that probably includes a ten percent contingency inside of that possibly?
They do have contingency built into their estimate. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the revised petition for the Yorktown Commerce Improvements, approve the revised developers agreement and adopt an amending resolution of advisability for the required public improvements for Yorktown Parkway paving, Commerce Street paving, Yorktown Parkway waterline and Commerce Street waterline, all related to the Butler Immunity College thirteenth street expansion project.
I would, I would, I think it's worth noting that that road, that road going from here to thirteenth street moves our city forward probably fifteen to twenty years. Would you agree less that, that it's a, it's a big win for the city and the college?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just forgot my nativity here, nativity. Do we own, I mean, do we own the property to put the roads in or are we still waiting to get the property to put the roads in?
We have two properties that are in the eminent domain process. As you know, the, the college project is only adjacent to their land.
Okay.
And there's another three quarters of a mile of the project that as of tonight, we have over half of the right of way in hand.
Perfect. That's, I was really just meaning on the college. So perfect. Thanks, Les.
And what else? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Ten two Butler Community College expansion amending, amending work ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an amending ordinance authorizing the construction of certain improvements at the Butler Community College Edition on thirteenth street in Andover, Kansas.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eleven record retention resolution amending the city's record retention policy.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a records retention revision to the policy that we adopted ten years ago, which seems like it was not ten years ago, but we did adopt this policy initially in twenty thirteen. Your department heads have gone through the schedule to ensure that it still meets the needs of their departments, that everything has been included that they think should be included. Your attorney and associate actually of Mr. Klaus went through very carefully and, and found some things in statute that would allow us to get rid of some things at different times than we thought. So we feel confident in what is before you tonight. And to the public, the purpose of a records retention policy is just that at some point you cannot keep all the documents. So this policy guides staff on when it is in fact appropriate per policy to get rid of documents. So that we are keeping the ones that are most important and vital for the duration of time necessary by either state statute or what we've set. By no means do you have to get rid of things because it's in the records retention policy. But it does mean that there's a minimum timeframe in which we can't get rid of them before that. And that helps ensure some continuity of information. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jenny, do we send anything to the salt mines or do we keep everything here?
We keep everything here.
Okay.
And that's an excellent point and kind of the point of something like this is so that you don't have to incur costs to send things to other places if, you know, we don't need to.
Were there any major changes?
It was really more just like housekeeping. Um, one, it was mostly tweaking. There was one item in the actual policy that indicated before you would actually destroy anything, you'd have to bring a list of every single item to the governing body before you got rid of it, which seemed very duplicative because you're approving the schedule. So as long as we don't do anything outside of the schedule, then we'll just go ahead and begin getting rid of things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Jenny, for, for the electronic documents, they're just there forever though, right? We don't like erase.
They are currently and I, I would have to ask Neil if he feels any pressure or concerns, if there's any point at time, which time he needs to start to purge those documents. But at this time, we don't have a go through and delete documents procedure.
Thank you.
Would that be added to this at some point?
It, it could be. Yes. If Neil approaches us and says that we need to do that.
Okay. I doubt we'll run out of hard drive space.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there anything that is not purgable? And I guess I go back to like land, you know, documents. Is there anything Les or Jenny that?
There's several items in the schedule and that's in your packet. If, if anyone wants to access that from our website, they can do that. So agreements and contracts are permanent. I won't run through all of these in interest of, of time, but city council records, which would be minutes and agendas, those are permanent.
That was my next thing was i- it's available to the public online through our website. Perfect. Great forethought. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution amending the policy and guidelines handbook, chapter one, general government, article one dash seven, records retention policy for the city of Andover, Kansas.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero member items and we'll start with Homer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Les, or this might be a Les or Rick kind of question or maybe statement. But I've noticed on North Andover Road after the most recent construction with like the school zone area. So from Allison to twenty first ish, but more or less, I can't remember the, the culvert street or what we call that. The lines in the road seem to be the yellow lines, I guess, that divide the road seem to be covered up more with maybe the asphalt that they did in the school parking lot over the summer. So I, I don't know if those are supposed to be faded. When I looked at other roads around Andover, so maybe on twenty first street, I don't notice those yellow lines fading at all. I don't know if you guys would maybe want to look at that and see if there is, you know, something to that. I just, I just noticed. I, I don't know why I noticed it the other night, but it was like you couldn't see the lines. And then I, when I looked the next day, it's like the tar that when the kids were exiting school or something after maybe fresh pavement have now gone over those yellow lines. And because there's so much school traffic, it has covered those. So I don't know if there's any kind of, you know, warranty on those lines or anything, but I guess I just want you guys maybe to take a look at it and see what you think.
I would say we could take a look at it. And if I feel like it's something that should fall under warranty from the contract, I can give it less and work on it from that end because he ran that project. If it's a non-warranty issue, it's just damage that's outside of the contractor's responsibility, we can take a look at it and see what process we can use to remedy it.
Thank you, Rick. And that's all I had. I'm excited for Greater Andover Days. I just took the, in case anyone was trying to register for the five K earlier and noticed that it closed at noon today, that has been extended. So you can still get in and compete against me in the five K. I should be in the rear, bringing up the rear of that race. And then just kind of before the horses and before the cleanup truck for the five K. So and then Troy and I have entered in the cornhole tournament. Again, excited about that. We just, we did a practice run at the Chamber Cornhole Tournament. And so excited for the Greater Andover Days. This is a new event this year. So I'm excited for Greater Andover Days to be kicked off and, and all the new events. So great job to the Greater Andover Days Committee for getting that up and running. And man, the, the carnival rides are all here kind of parked. And so you see what's coming. So super excited to take the kids and spend thirty dollars on each of them to get a wristband so they can ride all night long and, and do it upright, stay up late and all the kind of stuff that Greater Andover Days brings. So really excited for that and come out and enjoy the festivities. That's it.
I will not be in the five K. I will not be playing cornhole. But I will be calling bingo at the senior center from five to seven Friday night. It takes a lot of work on my part, but I'm, I'm a team player. And so come on over and, and partake.
Is the public welcome to the senior center or do you have to be a certain age?
Or do you have to be a member? How about that?
I mean, do you have to be a member of the senior center?
Have to be a member.
It's for GAD.
Okay.
You don't have to be a member.
Just have your GAD button.
But I am, by the way.
Shocking.
That's all I got.
There's a lot of events this GAD and so it's kind of exciting to see all the new things that, that has been added over the years and so I'm sure we'll have a, a lot of people out this weekend. I had a couple of things for staff or Rick. Have all the blue lights been changed out on the poles yet? It's the first question.
Well, as I drive around other communities, I realized that we were one of the earlier ones in our metro area. But I'm not so sure that some that got changed out haven't turned back to blue. So it's something we probably need to go around, take a look at and, and work with Evergy again on. But I know there's a lot of communities still waiting on the first time for theirs to get changed out. And I don't know if you've been made aware of this, but you know, that was a not just local to Wichita area, that was like nationwide and Evergy was not the only utility provider that had these lights out all over the area. So they, they all kind of got together, worked with the vendors, I understand. So the vendor didn't go bankrupt. So the vendor is only replacing so many at a time because otherwise if everybody leaned on the vendor at once for warranty work, I think it probably would have caused a vendor to go under. Nobody would have got their lights replaced. Under warranty anyway. So I think what I would say is patience with this. I know Evergy's actively working on it. And we can reach back out to them though and, and say, do, do you think you've got all of them in Andover? Because we know we have some.
Yeah. I, I've seen a couple in South, you know, Andover. So I'm sure there's probably more up, up north too, but those are just a couple that I've seen.
There have been a couple that turned blue again. So the ones on Broadway, you can leave because I kind of remind me of the seventies when I was a kid.
I actually think the ones on South Andover Road that. I actually think the ones on South Andover Road that Councilmember Warrington is replying to have turned again, too. That's the ones I was thinking of. I think I've seen return blue again.
Yeah, next question I have for you is, I heard, I saw a press release of a miniature golf coming to our area. I don't know if you have anything to report on that, or is it gonna be in the city limits, or?
I think this is the one that's just outside.
Just bordering, will, will they, will they annex in, or?
I, I doubt that. I doubt they would ask to do that.
Is it actually bordering us, or is it like a mile away?
I think it, it's pretty close.
The way I understand it, it is adjacent to our eastern city limits, and it was a county zoning case that we weren't notified about.
But wouldn't that be in our extraterritorial district, though?
Yes.
But we still weren't notified?
Correct.
Okay, where exactly is this thing? We should know if it was?
400 in Prairie Creek.
Yeah, I, I saw it on, I think, a KWCH last week, or actually, maybe, yeah, it was last week.
Last week, I saw the same thing. To say, simply put, it, the intentions are good.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's great. I just wish that, you know, we would have known more about it, and they could have, you know, come here and talked about it as well. And, but I also like to see them annexed in, too.
They specifically looked at land in Andover and chose that location, so.
Yeah.
I'll just leave that.
They can annex after, you know, so, I mean, they don't have to do it first. I mean, what are they, they gonna broadcast that they're in Andover, or are they gonna broadcast they're in the county? Because I'm pretty sure they're gonna say they're in Andover, so, and their mailing address is gonna be Andover, so I, I think we need to try to talk to them. You know? So.
There's some, there's some infrastructure struggles with that, but we can take that up.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
I do like that. It would be cool to have a, that in addition to GAD, you know, at some point in the future. That's another competition. Speaking of that, so are you gonna do disc golf competition at GAD?
I'm thinking about it.
Summit 930?
Okay.
Amateur, of course. The lowest version of an amateur you could possibly be. That's where I'm at, so. Everyone be at GAD. Just come up, show up, show up, be at the concert, eat, have fun.
Troy, are you doing, are you doing anything else at GAD?
Well, I was gonna do pickleball, but my, my cousin Troy couldn't make it, so it was gonna be Troy and Troy, and so, I am awful at pickleball, and he's like an expert. It would have been, I'd have felt bad for him.
So, you're trying to bring a ringer in?
No, yeah, that's, yeah, actually. So, no, I'm not doing pickleball now.
Really?
Just, well, Jeep night.
Jeep night, huh?
Yeah.
Bring your duckies.
Always my favorite, yeah, totally. That's all. Thank you.
Everybody said go to GAD. I am excited. Looking through our packet, and you see this, the sales tax, the street sales tax receipt, it seems like it's going every month. It keeps getting higher than the free, from the previous. Jenny or Donna, how's the family future-first sales tax coming?
It's, it's also in line with that. Unfortunately, I did get an email today for our September receipts, which would be July sales, and for some reason, it's 25% lower than last year.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's possible that a vendor or vendors are delinquent in pain, and so maybe next month's will be higher.
Yeah.
At this point, I don't have a solution. I just found that email.
Okay, okay.
So.
But compared to, I mean, just looking at this, yeah.
As it is, even with that reduction, we're still 200,000 ahead of where we were last year at this time.
So, are we above, what percentage above projection, projection are we?
At this point, with that reduction in there, maybe 10. I mean, it's still a good increase.
Better than none, so.
So, I'm anxious for now what we get next month, because, and it wasn't just use tax or sales tax that went down. They both went down.
Okay.
So, I didn't see any rhyme or reason to it, but.
Could be the state screwed up, too. You just never know.
Well.
So, will you go back and research that? I mean, is that something you'll go?
There's not a lot I can get to. They don't allow a lot of detail
Okay.
of what makes that up. If, if it would continue, yes, we would definitely talk to them and say, okay, is there something going on that we don't know about?
Right.
But it's not like we've had a business close or anything like that, so I don't know.
And I would just add for the viewing public, the reason that that information is guarded so carefully is for proprietary information. Obviously, sales tax is a percentage, so you could figure out sales per individual business pretty easy if they provided that level of detail to the city, so that is the explanation or rationale for why that's somewhat guarded.
Still awesome. I mean, just looking at this, it's fantastic, so. Make sure you guys come and see the parade. Make sure you wave at Andover, Andy Andover. He will be there as well, making a nice appearance.
Cool, yeah. Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Chief Russell, I saw the fire trucks at the new station this afternoon, driving around.
Yes, sir.
That was really kind of cool, seeing them in there, so I'm sure they were just testing things out to make sure they fit.
Yeah, so we had, in our large committee, our Planning Design Committee, we had members from each shift, so those members are making regular visits down to make sure that what we put on paper is actually being done, and they're doing a great job.
Yep, yep. It was nice to see. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess I got one more question, too, Chief. In regards to the heritage, are, are our first responders going out there and, and not necessarily checking, but are they looking around to familiar, make yourself familiar with the, the building and structure? And I've seen a couple trucks parked, and I didn't know, so I just wondered if that's a routine that they're doing to, because someday soon, we'll be, there'll be folks in there, right?
Sure. We're actually out, you started to say not necessarily checking, but familiarizing. We're actually doing both. So, your fire marshal was out there today doing some fire, routine fire inspections of the process, and he's out there quite a lot doing that as well. Your operations staff, fire, folks in the fire trucks are out there all the time watching the building get built. So, later, we hope this never happens, but it's our job to worry about it.
Sure.
So, if the building's on fire, and it's in void space here and there, we know what's behind the void space. We know that the fire will act in these certain ways. That's why we're here. They're also looking at the escape pathways, the elevator shafts, the roof build, all of that kind of stuff, just so we're ready in case anything should ever happen.
The northeast corner specifically is the one I'm worried about, so.
Got it. All right, that in.
Thank you. I seen the trucks, and I just figured that's what they were doing. I didn't know if it was a one-time thing, or if it's something that they're laser-focused on.
Yeah, we've been out there a lot, and the construction company has invited us from day one. They said you don't need an appointment. All you need to do is show up, and they've been very open to our visits.
Good.
Why the northeast corner?
Can't tell you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to bring up one thing related to heritage, and everyone's talked about GAD, so not to belabor the point, but GAD actually starts this year on a Thursday night, and it starts at the Heritage. Would encourage anybody who is curious about what's going on out there to come to that event. There's a barbecue dinner that you can feed the family and skip making dinner that night. You can buy tickets. I'm not sure if you can buy them online still, but I've been told you can buy them on-site if you choose to do it that way. I think some talking in the community that I've had very casually is that people do not know what all is about to come. I've had, had some comments about the apartment complex going up in the cornfield, so there's a plan for that entire 100 acres, and so, come to the event, learn a little bit about that. From the highway, you cannot see the ponds, the linear park that is being built right now, but if you get onto the property, you can see the vision that's about to come at that location, so I would encourage people to come out Thursday night and start GAD on a high note.
I was out there today, and they do have the stairs poured and, and all kinds of things going in. It's pretty cool. Pretty, pretty slick. So, and by the way, I'd like to thank Megan Shapal for doing a fabulous job of getting information about how to Wichita and the other communities about Greater Andover Days, so I expect a really large cloud, crowd, because she's really gone above and beyond to get the word out, so.
And Mr. Mayor, on that point, too, you know, when you go to search for GAD and stuff like that, they've got the links for the events, so Disc, 5K, Cornhole, you know, all the events out there, there's a link to it from the website, too, and that's very handy, so I appreciate that as well.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.